I'd like to reconvene the March 31st, 2020 regularly scheduled board meeting for the Richland Two Board of Trustees where we just returned from executive session to discuss the items that were made in the motion to go into executive session. For the record, we came out of executive session at 5:38. The motion was made by Ms. Mackey, seconded by Dr. Holmes, and the vote to come out was We will now have our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. For the inspirational moment, I just wanted us to take a moment of silence, but I want to be very specific about what I think we should be thinking about or working through in this time. We have so many healthcare workers that are on the front line, first responders that are putting their lives on the line to help during this virus. So many families are struggling with either loss of family or family who's very sick for long periods of time. Lots of folks that have lost their jobs and really struggling financially during this time. I hope that we will all keep those folks in our thoughts during this inspirational moment and just may give them extra special thoughts and care for the work that they're doing and the issues that they're going through. So if we can now have a moment of silence. If we can now do our pledge of allegiance.
I'd be United America. One God, invisible, deliver peace, justice, love.
Thank you. If I can now have a motion to approve our agenda.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the March 31st, 2020 regular board meeting agenda that Richland Two School Board of Trustees.
Motion's made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, if you will please take the vote. Motion passes six yes, one no. Next, we will move to our consent agenda. If I can please have a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
I'd like to approve or make a motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight's meeting, March 31st, 2020.
Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll please take the vote. Motion passes seven yes, zero no. And I guess I should also state, just for the record, that we have all board members in attendance. The board members, if you are watching this, that are not here with us physically are with us via telephone, teleconference. Next, we will have item 6.1. If I can please have a motion regarding policy BEDH.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Mackey.
I move to suspend policy BEDH, public participation at meetings for all meetings through the end of April 2020.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, it's Lindsey Agostini.
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
Thank you. While I understand and can appreciate the recommendation from the South Carolina School Boards Association that they see a need with a global pandemic to suspend this, I'd like to take our students, especially those who were determining their fate through student appeals, into consideration. And while not frequent, on more than one occasion, we've had parents come and address the boards through public participation about their students' appeal. And so for that reason, I can't support, as long as we're having a board meeting and talking about students bringing up appeals, I can't support this.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, just for clarification with Mrs. Agostini. Ms. Agostini, did you mean to say that sometimes parents may come in to speak in our executive session when we're considering the student appeal? Or did you actually mean that they come before public participation? Because as I understand it, you aren't supposed to talk about specific student issues anyway.
No, Mr. Shad. We have had more than one time during public participation, parents stand up and address a disciplinary action or a decision that the board was supposed to make regarding their own child. And that's, you know, while they generally come in during executive session, we have had it happen where they have come in during public participation and addressed the board. And that's what I'm making reference to. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Ms. Shad. Any other discussion?
Mr. Manning.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Mackey.
Mr. Chair, just for the point of clarification, I know that I just finished watching Governor McMaster's most recent press conference less than an hour ago where he was asking us to limit the groups that we have as small as they possibly can. I know that there are other opportunities for parents and ways for parents to communicate with us, and that means that we are temporarily making our board meetings as minimal and skeletal as possible in recognition of the greater good, which is keeping as many people safe while the COVID-19 outbreak is still running rampant and making sure that we are limiting our exposure and keeping our parents safe and keeping our students safe and keeping our staff and faculty safe, that we temporarily suspend BEDH just for a small period of time in order to keep as many people safe as possible. We still don't know how this thing is going from day to day. It's very fluid and the numbers keep rising daily. So I think an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure on our end with regard to this.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Mr. Shad.
Dr. Davis, just for the public's satisfaction in terms of knowledge, if a parent of a student who has an appeal before us, would they still have the opportunity to send emails, send written appeals to us to supplement their request when we're considering their student's situation?
That's correct. The appeals process is still in place for, if a student is recommended for expulsion and the recommendation is then brought before the board by the hearing officer to expel or assign that student to an alternative educational setting, the parent still has an opportunity through board policy to file an appeal. We make every effort to ensure that appeals are brought before this board. Essentially, it's almost impossible to leave a hearing without determining, identifying whether or not you want an appeal. I believe what Ms. Agostini was leaning toward was the fact that they come to during public participation, but at that time, the board has already discussed in executive session appropriately what those, the appropriate recommendations are already given, whether or not a public plea will change the board's decision. Vote is up to that board then to decide, but public participation is not a part of
Thousands of parents did come before the board in public participation and named her student, but also named another student, which is a violation of the FERPA law. So therefore, in public, I think that we need to limit what they can say in terms of naming students, which is what this parent did. And that's how I think when the board really just cares about that. Just my two cents was, since I was there.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. I also want to remind folks that what we are doing is suspending the policy. We are not making any recommendations to change the policy at this time. So I do want to be clear that we are not changing the policy. Currently, the recommendation or the motion is to suspend it. That is based off of best practice and is only being considered in order, as Ms. Mackey said and as others have said, to ensure the safety of staff, board members, and of course, all of the family and other folks that we all come in touch with. This board does not take lightly the suspension of this policy. In fact, this board has fought very hard to maintain public participation is a core component of all of our board meetings. In fact, we have two public participation opportunities. Very few boards have two. Some don't even have one. And so I feel confident that this board does not make this decision lightly at all. Also, as board chair, I have worked with the superintendent to ensure that we streamline these meetings to only necessary business so that there's not a lot of business that can be done at other times that would elicit more public participation. All right. Motion passes six yes, one no. And if you hear a little bit of background, we're trying to get mics straightened out in this environment. Social distancing apparently is causing the mics not to work as well either. Item 6.2, if I can have a motion regarding the April 7th, 2020 board meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Mackey.
I move to cancel the April 7th, 2020 board meeting. That's it.
All right. Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey and seconded was that Dr. Elkins Johnson?
No.
Dr. Holmes, I'm sorry. Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there, with a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, it's Lindsey Agostini.
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
I have a question. Are there any student appeals that would be coming up on the April 7th agenda?
Ms. Agostini, there may be student appeals on that agenda. However, since we are out of school, students are still being serviced. Since we are all doing remote learning or e-learning, nothing has changed in that student's status regardless of where they are assigned to at that time. So they're still being treated as if they're at their home school or if they're at Blythewood Academy, they're still receiving their work regardless of where they are in this process.
And I'm sorry, Dr. Davis, that was a really bad echo, so I didn't understand sadly a word that was said.
Maybe, can I repeat, Dr. Davis, if that'll, can you hear me better?
Mind, I would.
Okay, so.
You're very clear.
And Dr. Davis, please correct me if I'm wrong, but Dr. Davis indicated that there would be appeals during that time, but because students are doing online learning, we are serving them regardless because they're not in a school facility. So they continue to receive the services via the electronic online or the packets that we distributed to students. So there's no interruption in their learning process at this point. So while there could be appeals, there's no interruption to their services, to their educational programs.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No.
Did that answer your question, Ms. Agostini?
It did. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? With no further discussion, we'll take the vote. Motion passes seven zero. Next, we have approval or ratification of personnel for the upcoming school year. If I can please have a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Dr. Holmes.
I'm making a motion that we approve the ratification of personnel for the upcoming school year.
Motion's been made by Dr. Holmes. Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, Lindsey Agostini.
Yes, Ms. Agostini. Sorry, go ahead.
On this list, is this just for, is this returning teachers or returning and new professionals as well?
Dr. Davis. You got the question. The question was, is this for new staff? Is this for returning personnel or is it for returning and new staff for the upcoming year?
It's a combination of both. There's some reassignments, there's some re, there's some promotions, but it's also for the upcoming school year for administrative and professional recommendations. But most of it will be those individuals who are, who we've interviewed and we're assigning to schools for next year.
Okay.
Because we don't have, we don't have, we don't have the contract signed yet, Ms. Agostini, for our current teachers. So this will be all of our future teachers and employees who we are recommending to be hired to fill vacancies for next school year.
Okay. So this is for teachers that we're offering a contract to?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Very good. That's my, no more questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? With that, we'll take the vote. Motion passes seven zero. Next, we have the approval of the board meeting schedule for 2020-2021 school year. If I can please have a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, Dr. Elkins Johnson.
I'd like to make a motion that we revise the school board meeting schedule for 2021 to reflect a second and fourth Tuesday in June of 2021. I'm not sure if that was an oversight, but in the June meeting, it's the second and I think third. The dates are not the second and fourth Tuesday for June of 2021. I'm not sure if that was an oversight, or if it wasn't, if someone else can explain why we're not moving the second and fourth Tuesday.
For 2021. Dr. Davis.
Dr. Elkins Johnson, I know the 29th of 2021, that was probably scheduled that way because of SCASA. So if we did it on the Tuesday that we were at SCASA, most of the district leadership would be at SCASA during that time.
And I'm saying.
Well, I was just wondering, not everyone attends SCASA, and I was wondering if we could still, well, apart from my motion, but because not everyone attends SCASA, so we want to still have the board meetings and we call in like we're doing tonight so we don't begin to change board meetings. I know for myself, I know we normally plan to keep the second and the fourth Tuesdays aside for board meetings. And also, we didn't discuss moving a board member, moving from the second and fourth Tuesday.
Dr. Elkins Johnson.
So my motion stands that we reflect the board meeting schedule for 2020-2021 to remain the second and fourth Tuesday.
All right. So your motion is, because we, in order to really have discussion, we've got to have a motion and a second. So your motion is to approve the draft agenda with the revision of the second meeting in June to be our second Tuesday rather than the 28th or 29th as proposed, fourth Tuesday rather.
Just keep it the way that we always have board meetings, the second and fourth Tuesday.
Okay. So the motion's been made by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Agostini. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Manning, I have a question.
Dr. Elkins Johnson.
I know that we had this discussion before about moving board meetings for the top of this, and I'm just wondering why we don't have this discussion prior to, or why can't we have someone else to hold the meeting or we call in if we're ongoing this process? I know I would probably be, but I should call in.
I believe it was because we have, we do have a number of board members and also numerous key staff that are out during that meeting, not just the superintendent, but also other staff. And with SCASA being recognized as a statewide program for many of the leaders in the state, it was to accommodate that educational opportunity for our professionals. That's why that decision was made that way. But ultimately, it is the board decision. We, no final decision is made until we take a vote and approve the dates. So as it stands, the motion, you've made the motion that we approve it without that accommodation.
Let me just ask, Dr. Elkins, a question first.
Okay.
Exactly where we will be on Assistant Principal of the Year, will that be a question? Is that that night?
Typically, the Assistant Principal of the Year, I believe, is on that Tuesday. So for the past three, four years.
I will leave, I'm not sure. I didn't know it was on that Tuesday night.
Dr., I don't know why I'm struggling to hear you over some of the other board members, but.
Maybe we can get them, others to mute their phones? Maybe we'll be able to hear.
I said that because that is the night that we will be on Assistant Principal of the Year, I will rescind the motion.
Okay.
Let me just make a point of clarification, Dr. Elkins Johnson. That's for 2021, so we don't know at this moment if we would have an Administrator of the Year next summer. We have one this summer, and so we made the recommendation to move it this summer because of the Administrator of the Year. And we've had someone from our district or schools be named an Administrator of the Year for the last three years, I believe, three or four years consecutively. So it's a possibility that that could be the case, and so we went ahead and made that adjustment now, of course, in hopes that we would have another person recognized at the state level as Administrator of the Year. So, but I just didn't want you to assume that we were doing that for 2021, and right now, we don't know if there's going to be someone for 2021.
Okay. This is for clarification. I will go ahead and rescind my motion. And my motion will be the board meeting schedule for 2020-2021.
Dr., can we rescind a motion like that once we have a second, or do we have to take the vote?
Oh, okay.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. So we're voting on the motion that Dr. Elkins Johnson made?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
I'm going to rescind that.
Yeah, I think because it was seconded, we have to, I think we've got to take the vote on it.
Right.
Yeah. I hate to do that, but I think we need to do that to be consistent, so.
Right.
All right. Okay. So we are now going to, we are going to vote on Dr. Elkins Johnson's motion, which includes the change from what the district recommended. Is everybody clear?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we're going to take the vote now. And motion fails, zero yes, seven no. Can I please have another motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the board meeting schedule for the 2020.
I voted yes, 2020.
Well, yeah, I mean, Dr. Elkins Johnson, I can't future do that. I mean, it's, I hear what you're saying, but we made the motion, so Ms. Mackey's going to do it. She spoke up.
No, I think my vote was wrong. That's what I think on the last motion.
So you're saying you voted.
Was not a motion made by Ms. Mackey to begin with?
Hold on. But if I, I need, just let me, let me, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Dr. Elkins Johnson, you're saying you voted yes for your motion?
Yes. Right. And my computer was doing some crazy things when I heard.
Okay. So can we change the record to reflect that it should have been one yes, six no? That's what you're saying, right, Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Can you hear me?
Can I what?
You're fading out.
So I'm sorry. Again, to repeat, we were changing the record, we're changing the record to reflect that on the last motion, you voted yes. So one yes, six no.
No, no. No, I voted no, but it popped up yes actually, computer's saying.
Okay. So, okay. So the original statement that I made, zero yes, seven no, was the correct vote?
Right. But my screen was showing something different, so I wasn't sure what you guys reflected there.
Okay. All right. Yeah. So as I've previously stated, it was zero yes, seven no. So the record will officially reflect zero yes, seven no's.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So, and now, Ms. Mackey, you were in the middle of making your motion to, if you'll, go ahead with that, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the board meeting schedule for the 2020-2021 school year. Seconded.
All right. So it was motion made by Ms. Mackey and seconded by, who was on the phone that second?
Dr. Holmes.
Dr. Holmes, seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? All right. With no discussion, we'll have the vote. All right. Motion passes seven yes, zero no. We will not have item 7.1 based off the fact that we suspended our policy for public participation for all meetings through the end of April. And we will now move on to our executive session items. Item 8.1, adult education.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Mr. Shad.
I move that we approve the admission requests for student one and student two into the district's adult education program.
Motion's been made by Mr. Shad. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? And the motion passes seven yes, zero no. Next, if I can have a motion on item 8.2, student appeals.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Mr. Shad.
As to student number one, I move that we grant the appeal and have the student return to their home school with strict probation and receive services. And for students two, three, and four, deny their appeal and uphold the district's recommendation for expulsion. I'm sorry.
All right.
Deny the appeal and uphold the district's recommendation.
Two, three, and four. Deny the appeal.
Okay. So the motion's been made by Mr. Shad. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Agostini. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, I'm going to have Mr. Shad make sure that it is accurate. All right. The motion's accurate. Motion passes seven yes, zero no. There's no need for item 8.3 on our agenda. We will now move into item 9.1, a report from our superintendent on COVID-19. Dr. Davis?
Mr. Chair, a point of clarification. We did that, yes, sir. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of our board, I hope that you all are taking good care of yourselves as you are ensuring that you are practicing social distancing while at home, but still conducting the business of the school district. I have an update for you, although I think I've, we've been doing a pretty good job of keeping you all in the loop regarding information that has been taken. Things have been unfolding in the district. However, I do want to share a little bit of the district's response and timeline and overview, as well as some other information regarding school closure due to COVID-19. Just as a brief ref-.
Just as a brief reminder, early recap, you remember back in January and February of this year, our our district nurse was receiving updates from the Center for Disease Control and and DHEC, and many of the preventive measures that were already in place, we were practicing those preventive measures as we were in the middle of flu season. But in late February.
Real bad echo.
If everybody your phones are if everybody's phones are being alerted as Dr. Davis is speaking about COVID-19, we're all receiving a COVID-19 alert on safety.
Let's let's try this. I'll step back from the mic just a little bit as well. Can you hear me now?
That's a lot better, yes.
Yes, ma'am. As you all remember, in late February, officially on February the 28th, Richland School District Two notified employees and parents that the district works with partnership with the with DHEC and the Midlands Region to monitor the emerging health concerns that impact our schools. We shared the district administrator, we shared with shared that district administrators were following the COVID-19 situation closely and described precautions that were already in place. One of the things that we did at that time was we dedicated a webpage to coronavirus and added this to the district's website. On March the 9th through the 13th, several things unfolded. The district implemented additional preventive measures. I won't go into the extensive list of those measures, but you have that in your report. But a few things that we did between the between the 9th and the 13th was increased preventive measures already in place for flu season, suspended all student clinical internships and job shadowing experiences in hospitals, nursing homes, and physicians' offices until further notice. We also canceled or postponed non-essential district-level events through spring break, and then we expanded discussions on beginning to formalize formalized plans and organizing resources for the possibility of e-learning should the state close schools for an extended period of time. Parents and employees receive additional information on the in the March 9th issue of U to two, U and two. And the district announced restrictions on travel, school visits, and the use of facilities by outside groups on Friday, March 13th. On Sunday, March 15th, we had a executive executive staff had a pre previously planned meeting, but also the governor had a press conference on that day, and on March 15th, he issued Executive Order Number 2020 dash 09 that directed the closure of public schools in the state of South Carolina for students and non-essential employees, beginning on March the 16th, 2020, through Tuesday, March the 31st, 2020. That Sunday afternoon, the district announced the closure to all Richland Two parents and employees. The announcement included details on locations and times for distribution of of free bag breakfasts and lunches for that would start the next day. And in a separate announcement, employees were notified of their work schedule for March 16th through the 19th. On Monday, March the 16th, the district and school administration administrators and designated staff worked on plans and logistics for e-learning or remote learning. Teaching and learning staff worked through the night to develop content for students and resources for teachers. As I shared in one communications before, we were here till about 12 a.m. working on getting those getting that packet together for our elementary students. In an update to the parents, the district announced that elementary students will engage in remote learning by completing work packets specific to their grade level. Parents and students in middle and high school were informed that their students would be accessing their e-learning work online using personal devices or the district-issued Chromebooks. Myself and Ms. Roof provided an update through via live stream. And then on and then Governor McMasters also issued his second executive order, Number 2020 dash 10, in response to the recommendation to avoid social gathering in groups of more than 10 announced in the President's Coronavirus Guidelines for America. And as a result, the district adjusted their original work schedule. Employees were informed that starting on Wednesday, March the 18th, school administrators and district administrators would report to work. Other essential employees needed needed onsite, either at school or in the district office, would be notified by their principal or their supervisor. All employees were asked to be reachable during their normal work hours in case that their supervisors needed to contact contact them for assistance with any essential need of the district. Parents and students with individual education plans or 504s received an update from the Richland Two Instructional Support Service Office. On Thursday, March the 19th, parents received an update on how the district is providing assistance to families while school and district offices are closed and while most employees work from home, the district created a school closure hotline that is checked regularly Monday through Friday from 8 a.m. to 4 p.m. On Sunday, March the 22nd, which I believe was one week later, seemed like a lot longer than that, the district announced additional sites for the distribution of meals for children age 18 and under. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. On the 23rd, employees receive additional guidance on expectations from working from home and onsite, as well as information about employee pay and employee leave. And on Tuesday, March the 24th, South Carolina Governor Henry McMasters, Superintendent of Education Molly Spearman issued a joint statement announcing that South Carolina schools will remain closed for the duration of the month of April. In response, Richland Two provides provides an update to employees and an update to our If you take a look at the PowerPoint presentation that was shared with you as well regarding the COVID-19, you will find some figures that the administration wanted to share with the board and with the community. One of the things that was important to us, as I know it was important to our board, was ensure that our students that were in the most need receive the services that they needed to needed to have during the school closure, which begins with making sure that they receive nutritious meals. And as of March the 27th, 2020, when we pulled this data, on that particular day, we had served 5,374 meals. But since school has closed, as of the 27th, we had served 29,679 meals. I'm sure we have well eclipsed over 30,000 meals at this point in time. In addition to that, we are very conscientious of our strategic plan, which states that we would provide communications and information to our families. And so we have done so in the form of providing updates via smores. One of the benefits of the smores app, a partnership, is that it allows us to send a text message to our parents, and they can then click on in the text and go directly to the website and see the information. So not only are they getting the information through email, not only is it also posted on our website, but when we text them, we they have the ability to access this information on the go from their phones without having to go to their computers and read an email and so, which makes it really convenient, which is, I think, one of the reasons why you see the number of views. So this has been very effective for us to in communicating with or sharing information with our community. You can see that on the March 24th update, we we had about 32,000 views. On the March 19th update, we have 43,000 views. And for that time period between the 20 and the 27th, we had over 100,000 views of information that we'd been sending out to our parents. One of the most viewed messages was the message to our parents that was shared from my office and with assistance from the communications, we had over 100,000 views of that letter. Also, 52,000 views regarding school closures and 45,000 views. So our views our views are picking up as we are getting deeper into the COVID-19 crisis, those views are picking up, and so we're well over 236,000 views. We're going to continue our efforts to update the community along with our staff, our students, our parents, by doing a couple of live Facebook Live updates. And so we'll be doing those beginning on Wednesday, April the 1st at 1 p.m. And also repeating doing a second one on Wednesday, April the 8th at 1 p.m. We'll allow for questions to be asked live about different topics or things that are going on, and we'll we'll do our do my very best to respond to our community regarding the questions that they may present. I'm anticipating that that we'll have several questions from our students, more importantly, our seniors. But our first live stream, we had over 1,300 views in our first live stream effort, so we're looking forward to continuing to communicate in that way. We also have been doing e-learning and remote learning, as you all know. We we call the remote learning basically the information that we have sent out and in the packets. And so, as I stated earlier, March 13th through the 18th, we prepared and launched the e-learning remote learning. On March 19th, e-learning started for our middle and high school students, and remote learning printed packets started for our elementary students. On the April 1st to the 3rd, we will begin distributing Chromebooks to students in grades two through five and remote learning packets for our for our students that are in child development up to first grade. On April 10th through the 17th, we will observe spring break. And then the 13th through the 7th, the 13th through the 17th, again, spring break for our employees. And then on April 20th, and our middle and high school students will have additional work from the e-learning. We'll begin the process of having new materials as we're moving toward grading based on the the guidelines we received from the State Department of Education today, as well as providing additional packets for our K through first grade students and introducing the e-learning to second grade. And so we want to get those devices out to our second, third, fourth, and fifth graders that traditionally don't take their devices home. So we want to give them some time to get used to having a device at home to they are familiar with working with Chromebooks, but not necessarily working with them at home for the purpose of completing assignments. And so we'll begin to roll that out and work with those students as well as we deliver The last bit of information I want to share with the board and with our public is just about the district services and operations. A lot has happened since we've gone to closure of schools. And a couple of things have drawn to draw your attention to services, things that we provided for our students and for our parents, services for our students and parents, preparing free breakfasts and lunches for our students, distributing free meals at 11 sites, transporting and distributing free meals at 12 additional community sites, providing Chromebooks and remote learning, IT support at three depot centers, and we continue to enroll new students, monitoring students who are receiving social emotional support via learning support services, providing special education services, including speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, et cetera, as appropriately through virtually, providing periodic health checks for students who receive nursing services for chronic conditions such as diabetes, high blood pressure, ADHD, to ensure that they are able to participate effectively in e-learning. And I currently was on a phone call today with Prisma Health. We are working on setting up telehealth services for our students and for the community through the use of their Chromebooks. So one of the barriers we had to do was remove the filter that we have in Richland Two that doesn't allow our students to connect to the Prisma site that allows for the telehealth. And so tech IT is working on that along with our lead nurse. So our students and their parents, instead of going in for their routine blood pressure checks or for med refills, they'll be able to log on to the telehealth, be observed by a physician. And if they need to come in, they will then report to identify a remote site at the district. We have proper protocols and procedures in place to take check temperatures and things like that before they are admitted. But in that site, they'll have a P A or a or a nurse practitioner there that will be connected to the doctor, the telehealth, to determine what the next steps would be. But no one will be admitted onto the school into the building if they have a temperature. So we're working quickly to get that established in Richland Two to continue to provide service for our students and for our community as well. So anyone in our community will be able to participate in this. It doesn't they don't necessarily have to be a student, but but mainly it's for our students and for their parents if there are some 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 challenges getting to a physician. The district has provided district-level support to school administrators, teachers, and support staff, students, and parents. We have ongoing consultation with our lead nurse and cabinet as relates to COVID-19 updates, and so that we're being updated regularly. We're maintaining overall IT support. We're making sure that cleaning and sanitation of facilities with essential tasks are taking where essential tasks are taking place. And so wherever there are individuals that are reporting that are essential personnel, those offices are being cleaned every day daily thoroughly. Here at R2I2 or at schools, we have those buildings being cleaned every day thoroughly outside, the door handles, windows, desktops, they're probably some of the cleanest places in the city right now. They're being cleaned very thoroughly. We're providing security coverage for those places where essential tasks are being performed by our staff. We are continuing to interview for vacancies using video conferencing and following social distancing guidelines and taking recommendations and the precautions into into account. And communications updates as needed through multiple mediums, through direct messages, websites, social media, as et cetera. So I already shared with you that the district is beginning the transition in grades two to five for the e-learning, which will begin on April 20th. Our child development kindergarten students will continue to use remote learning packets as described earlier. And so those have been some of that's some of the information regarding what we've done since the the closure of the schools as a result of COVID-19. I do want to conclude with Dr. Molly before we take any questions, if there are any, with some information regarding the 2020, 2021 budget. Dr. Molly?
Thank you. As you recall, I briefed the board on, I believe it was February the 25th, board meeting on the actions of the Ways and Means Committee, which was followed up closely by the House, in which the budget was passed in record speed. About $215 million appropriated for teacher pay raises and all those things. Well, the budget process and our budget has been a victim of the coronavirus, and all of that is meaningless at this point. The House and the Senate have been discussing it, and from what we've heard and what we've seen, the Senate has already passed in two readings, a recurring resolution, continuing resolution that will carry the budget for FY 2021 if we don't pass a budget, and it will be the same budget that we have right now. And so in our deliberations in our budget process, we have stopped our budget here budget presentations and our budget meetings because we have no information from the state at this point. We have two tracks of action, and we're going to be prepared to take both of them. One would be if the if the Senate and House pass a bill prior to, say, the first part of June. If they pass a bill for FY 2021 before the first part of June or right at the first part of June, we have enough time, we will have enough time, I think, to have our board give it two readings and get it to the county for at least one or two readings. The timing of that is difficult. We need to meet with the county because they may not be on the same timeline as we are, but that might give us a chance to adopt a new budget if the state acts prior to the beginning of June. If the state does not act, and what we are hearing right now is it's very, very likely that the state will pass the continuing resolution by June 30th, which will carry forward the state at the current funding levels for our FY 1920. If that happens, we've prepared a continuing resolution for your consideration to be adopted that last week in June, which gives us the authority to pay our bills and keep people employed and pay make payroll during the time that they ultimately pass a budget. What the discussion now is, they want to see what happens, how long this happens, whether it's a long period of time, whether we're out of this in three to four months, that's different than if we're out of this in six or 12 months, and that they don't want to pass a budget at this point. So we expect a continuing resolution from the state, which will dictate to us to have a continuing resolution, and that we'll bring that to you and continue to operate. That would mean that we pay at the same levels we're currently paying, no one would get a pay increase. Now, there are some concerns at the state level that they may still add a proviso of some kind for a step increase for all all teachers. That's great, but it might be with no new funds. So we'll address that if the state does that. But right now, we have those two paths to go. We'll be preparing both paths. Either one, we don't anticipate, even if the state does provide some kind of funding and budget before the before June, we don't expect it to be a very major increase due to concerns about how big of an impact this virus will be on on state revenues. With that, I'll take any questions you may have, and we'll just keep you updated.
All right, board members, questions or comments?
Dr. Molly?
Dr. Holmes?
Yes, Dr. Molly. It was very it was kind of difficult to hear all the nuances of what you were saying. Is there any way that? Is there any way that you could kind of do a summary sheet of what you kind of said and send it, send that out to us?
Absolutely. I'll be glad to do that tomorrow morning.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes.
All right, other board members, questions?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Mackey?
Yeah, just wanted to, um, thank you, Dr. Miley, for your presentation as well. I would appreciate the update that you're going to send. Um, Dr. Davis, I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you for all of the, um, the efforts that you all have taken as staff, as teachers, as faculty members in District Two. Um, you literally had to recreate where the learning takes place in District Two. And as soon as, you know, um, the rubber hit the road, you all didn't wait for instruction to find out how to do that. You all were already on the ground, making copies and trying to find a way to make education and meals accessible to our students. I know it's not just you, it's not just your, you know, your executive cabinet, although I think, I'm thankful for all of y'all, but it was a lot of teachers, a lot of administrators, a lot of staff members, all of you all, a lot of hands on deck, and for the, the people who work, who, the folks who are working for the Decks, so, who don't have the option to stay home, who come, who choose to come out every day and provide meals for our students. I mean, there's just a lot of moving parts. And although you do an amazing job, um, all the district people and staff members throughout Richland Two, uh, making sure that we're aware on social media and providing, you know, myriad updates, and I was able to, to watch, um, your conversations with Libby Roof. But thank you also for providing the board with constant updates so that we know what's going on. So when there are folks in the community who ask us, you know, how something is being done, you, you decided to appreciate the, the, the plethora of information that we're receiving so that we're able to provide it for the community who has so many questions and just, I appreciate that. I know that nothing's perfect because no perfect, no system and no person is perfect, but for the efforts that are taking place while considering people's safety, um, I just, I appreciate that, so, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Other board members?
Chair, Lindsey Agostini?
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to take this opportunity to also thank Dr. Davis for his leadership during this difficult time and also, um, thank, uh, Don McAdams and Libby Roof for their constant, and their departments for their constant communication and their efforts, not only as a board member keeping me informed, but also as a parent keeping me informed and up to date. And also a special thank you to all of our employees and contractors who have continued to educate, engage, sometimes entertain, which I've loved seeing on social media, feeding, and just looking out for the well-being of our kids. So I just want to say a thank you to all of them for their effort.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Others? All right, Ms. Shad?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Uh, it was a, a great presentation, even in this sobering time. Um, I, I do also want to personally thank Dr. Davis and the staff, the administration, um, our teachers, all of our employees. Um, you know, this is a trying time and it's great to have all of this communication when folks are not quite sure what the next day is going to be like, um, with regard to their jobs, their careers, their health. And, um, for a lot of parents, what's even more important for them is the education of their children. Um, we have essentially become a virtual school. Um, teaching and learning still continued. We still provided nutritious meals for them, and I applaud our district for doing that. Um, you know, one of our blocks is joy, and we talk about data and how do we make sure that we hold folks accountable for that. This is joy. This is family, this is community, and we have done a yeoman's job in making sure that our students are taken care of. Um, all you have to do is just find any of our teachers on Twitter or Facebook or what have you, and they miss their students. They really do miss it. And we do what we can with technology to try to keep them engaged and, and I know the students are missing and some of the parents are reporting, the students are missing school. It sounded fun at first, but they're ready to get back, uh, in front of their, they're probably ready to get, get away from the parents, and I'm sure the parents don't necessarily oppose that as well. But even in this time, you know, it's good to know that while we are practicing, and I've changed my terminology, we're practicing physical distancing. We are still social beings and we still must remain s- social, uh, stay social. And so, again, I applaud what we're doing. You all keep up the great work, not the good work, but the great work. And I'll just say this as a, as a moment of levity, and it really goes, goes to show how we are, um, as a family. Uh, when things were really coming down and we weren't quite sure how things were, um, just looking at social media, folks will say that, um, they're not believing anything that anybody is saying until they get a call from Libby Roof. And that is, it's like the gospel truth. Libby hadn't called yet, so we don't know. So keep up the good work, Libby at the Communication Department. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I do want to remind board members, if I can just remind, yeah, just give me one second. If I can remind board members to please mute your phone when you're not speaking, it's, I think there's a little bit of echo and feedback from folks, but, um, I'm sorry, was that Dr. Caution Parker?
No, that was Dr. Holmes. Are we giving, I, I guess everybody was giving their remarks. Are we doing remarks now or do we need to wait till the end?
We're, we're doing remarks on this particular topic, but there will also be board and superintendent comments. So if you wish to pontificate twice, you can do it or do it now.
Negative, I'll wait till the end.
I was trying to go with a yeoman. Uh, I had to use a big word to match my lawyer over here. All right. Any other comments? All right, no, I'll save mine for the end too then. Um, yeah, all right, um, next we have our draft agenda items for the April, well, no longer, April seventh, for our next board meeting. Dr. Davis, we can go ahead and skip it, okay? So we're going to skip the next two items, uh, considering that we canceled the April seventh meeting. And we will now go to board and superintendent comments. So what I'd like to do, I'm going to start on the phones and then go into people who are here. Um, so if I can start with Ms. Agostini?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brave. I just wanted to brief, excuse me. Um, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank all of the healthcare workers and others who are working tirelessly to keep all of us safe. And, um, my wish for all in Richland Two, throughout the state and the country and the world is actually just be safe and, uh, please look after your, your health. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Ms. Mackey?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I won't be redundant. So my comments with regard to Dr. Davis and Dr. Miley's, um, presentation touched on, on some of those comments, but I do want to bring attention to Dr. Davis, um, in addition to thanking everyone for what they're doing. I just wanted to congratulate him. Dr. Davis, that was announced today, um, is now the superintendent in residence for the University of South Carolina School of Education. That's a huge deal, and I just wanted to give him a shout out and tell him congratulations. We, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
I'm done. No questions on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mackey. Dr. Holmes?
Okay, I, first of all, would like to thank, uh, Richland District Two educational staff, faculty, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, security, and I'm not going to keep on naming because I'm going to miss everybody, but just all of, all of our educational stakeholders for all their dedication to our students through this uncharted time. Dr. Davis, I cannot say enough, I thank you for your leadership. You have shown tremendous leadership and congratulations on your USC appointment. It is well deserved as seen through your leadership through this particular situation. And for our teachers, teachers, this situation now shows that you are exactly worth the money. You are worth the money, teachers, twenty-four seven, and I thank you for your dedication at school and at home through this time. I've seen the videos where you've gone above and beyond, which is what great teachers do, and you are great. To our seniors, to our seniors who are in high school, I pray that there will be a time at a later date for you to make it, have an opportunity to make up for some of these activities that you are missing, such as your prom and your senior assemblies. I understand the pain and agony that, that comes with that because you waited all this time to have that moment. And I'm hoping that maybe at a later time after we get through this pandemic, that there will be opportunity for you to maybe have something. We will have to see. To our community, my prayers are with you, and I want to thank each, and I want to tell each of you to be safe. And to our healthcare workers and first responders, thank you so much for putting yourselves on the main line. We could not do this without it. And our, with our first responders also include those people that work getting out the food in the restaurant. They're putting themselves on the line every day, greeting all kinds of people that come in and get food from them, and they're important to our community also. And to parents, you got this. I know it's difficult, I know it's hard, but you got this. You're doing your part for your child's success. And I just want to say thank you and be safe.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes. Um, Dr. Caution Parker?
Um, first, I'd like to say congrats to, uh, Dr. Davis regarding USC. That is, that is fantastic. Um, and I just want to say thank you to our teachers, school communities, students, administrators, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, and district office staff for a job well done. And the effective and efficient, outstanding leadership that's been demonstrated is second to none as we go through these terrible times. Thank you all and keep it all in prayer.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. Uh, Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Uh, many of my colleagues have, um, echoed what I wanted to say, but I will say that as I share with you the news, school is closed, but of course we want to make sure that your books are still open. And also just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to our heroes and our heroes and our parents. Our parents really took the lead in going and becoming teachers with their kids. I want to say thank you so much for taking the lead on that. And teachers, thank you so much for your leadership. Thank you for being so creative. I really enjoy watching you guys on social media, continue to connect with your parents and your, um, your kids in the classroom. Want to say thank you to Dr. Davis and his team, of course, the cafeteria workers, our admin, team, district office staff for doing a well, well, extraordinary job on making sure that our students are still being fed, as well as getting their schoolwork done so they can be successful, because we all know that knowledge is power. So just want to say thank you for your leadership, thank you for your continued leadership, and just thank you for showing, um, the community what Richland Two is all about, being premier. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Mr. Shad?
Believe it or not, I don't have anything else to say. Um, other, why is Dr. Holmes laughing so hard? Other, other than to say that I'm grateful to serve with the wonderful board in, in a fabulous premier district. Y'all have a good evening and stay safe.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board and to our community. I want to first start off by sharing a bit of good news. Um, I want to say congratulations to Kirsten Bullington. She's the next energy engineering instructor at R two I two. Um, South Carolina Future Minds picked Ms. Bullington as the Midlands Region finalist for the STEM educator of the year. Excuse me. This puts, um, Richland Two on course to have two STEM educators of the year in a row. Warren Wise, as you remember, is the current and the first SC STEM educator of the year, teaches science at Kelly Mill Middle School. Um, as relates to the census, if you don't know, it is time for the U.S. Census twenty twenty, and our district and community needs everyone to participate. When you respond to the census, you'll tell the Census Bureau where you live as of April first, twenty twenty, and provide other basic information about your household. Complete the census either online, by phone, or by mail. Remember, your response matters. The census can shape many different aspects of our community, including our schools. In our collective memory, the efforts of the last several weeks are unprecedented and have certainly changed our lives. While there are challenges and sacrifices that come with our new normal, we are working together, we're working through this together. Taking good care of yourself makes you stronger for everyone in your life, especially those who depend most on you. Use some of your time away from work and school to recharge and reset. Stay connected with each, each other, but use good social or physical distancing practices as shared by Mr. Shad. During this time of physical separation, we want to stay as connected as possible to you all. So I will be conducting a Facebook Live on Wednesday, April first, at one P.M. to share information and answer your questions. So please visit the Richland Two website for information on this live stream as well as upcoming live events. I also wanted to take an opportunity to commend the Richland Two staff, uh, our parents, our students, our teachers, our entire community, uh, for your flexibility and active participation in our continuation of this important work. Um, I also want to acknowledge our board, uh, for the trust that they have demonstrated to the district leadership team and to our teachers. They've been there every step of the way with each and every one of us as we made some of the, the tough decisions on how we were going to continue to provide premier educational experiences for our students, but have given us the flexibility and the freedom to make some of those decisions, um, and it is well appreciated. So I do want to say thank you to our board for allowing us to do that. I was asked earlier in the, um, in this, in this, um, process of this pandemic of who's essential. Um, and there's been a lot of conversation in the state, particularly in education, about who are, who's essential employees. And my comment has, my, my, my response to that has not changed. We are all essential. We are all essential to providing, when it comes to providing premier educational experiences for our students, providing premier educational workspaces for our employees, and providing a premier educational learning environment for our community. We are all essential. And I, I am so proud to see everyone take up the mantle and adopt that mantra and perform at a premier level when it comes to providing these opportunities for our students. So whether it's our parents and adjusting their schedules to meet the needs of their students academically, whether it's our employees, many whom have to leave their homes every day to come to work, who are still having to report to work, I appreciate those sacrifices, those families that are, that have to sacrifice the things that they're doing to allow us to adopt to this new, um, this new method of providing education for our students. We're all essential in this process and none of us can be overlooked. And so I just want to say thank you to everyone, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, the Decks, so, you name it, any of our partners who are part of this process who have just continued to do the work, um, at a premier level. Thank you so much for continuing to do that, uh, for us. It's been said that hard times don't create heroes. It is during the hard times when the heroes within us is revealed. Thank you, thank you all for raising, rising to the occasion. While it's hard to be physically apart, we're blessed to have some resources to stay connected. So let's stay connected and let's stay safe.
Thank you, Dr. Davis, and certainly want to echo all the comments from other board members, including Dr. Davis and your recent, uh, appointment with the, uh, with the University of South Carolina and your position with them. Um, I appreciate your, um, you mentioned sort of the steady hand of the board. We also appreciate the steady hand of you and your administration. Um, y'all have been rock solid through this whole thing. You haven't been quick to overreact, which has been, uh, godsend considering the changes that we've seen come from, uh, from above. Um, and having that steady hand has helped us to really be able to maintain a relatively steady course throughout this whole thing. So thank you. I know there's so many hours from folks. I do want to mention IT folks because I, I think they're often unsung heroes. They're, they're here making sure that the bandwidth is available and that all the technology is working, which is the backbone for this. And I do think it's time, um, we are very fortunate in the urban area of Richland Two to have the connectivity that we have Dr. Davis recently shared with me, um, that through some of the personal devices we can issue, that we actually have devices that are not in use, um, or at least that one before this, that was the case. So we've been able to have, uh, really great coverage for our students and families, um, which we see is more than just educational. We talk about education, but Dr. Davis mentioned the social emotional needs of our students that we're continuing to try and define ways to meet. Um, the healthcare of our families and students that we're providing opportunities for. I think it's time, uh, that this country look at internet as a utility. Um, in our rural areas, they are not as blessed as we are with the connectivity and technology. And I think that it's time when we consider that it is more than just shopping on Amazon. It truly is healthcare, it truly is access to services and critical needs. And so I, I would, uh, hope and, and I hope to have some conversations with our legislators that this country needs to make internet a utility, um, for all of us. We, we see that more now than ever. Um, and I, I really do, is all the folks that were mentioned, everybody is coming together to make this work. Um, so thank you for all of that. And I, I do want to specifically thank the board. Um, you know, we've had so many more issues come up closer together. When we look at weather issues now, pandemic, we've had When we look at weather issues, now pandemic, we've had the flood, the thousand-year flood, major sizable issues are getting closer together. Unfortunately, we're getting better at handling emergencies, and it's kind of sad to say, but we are. And so I really appreciate this board. Y'all have been fantastic to work with. You've really trusted administration, the times I've gotten in contact with you, you've just been great to communicate with. So thank you all for making this job, difficult job, for making my job easier throughout all of this. And with that, I have no further comment. So if I can have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn this March 31st.
Button?
I make a motion that we adjourn the March 31st, 2020 board meeting.
Motion by Mr. Shad. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Holmes. Everyone in favor, say aye. Aye. Any nays? Did I have a nay, or everybody was an aye? Okay. Thank you very much. It's unanimous. At this time, we adjourn.